All right, I'm Josh Greider right there. You dream, I'll drive. You're listening to Mornings with Lone Star here at Lone Star Community Radio, hanging out with Nathan Arizati of Montgomery County Lifestyle. It's nine o'clock, which means Meet the Candidates segment. It's our special segment leading all the way to March 1st for voting in the primary election. And of course, we'll probably have something very similar to it in the May election and then also in the November election. So maybe we can get Bernie Sanders in here. You think we could do that, Nathan?
We can invite him.
Wouldn't that be great? Just to send him a little invite and see when he comes. I wonder if, who do you actually, who do you think's going to become the Republican candidate?
Right now, it's too early for me to call.
Really?
Yep.
Man, horse race, I like it.
It's too early for me to call.
But we're right here, folks, just letting you know what is Meet the Candidates. It's from nine to 10 every weekday morning. We're going to be featuring some type of political view, political guest, or something going on with the county of Montgomery County. And we're taking questions for all of our guests at all live right now on Montgomery County Lifestyle's Facebook. That is Nathan Arizati's Facebook page. So he has his computer out, you can hear him typing away, looking at all what's going on. We have a huge lineup left. We still have about a couple of weeks with this segment. And just to let you know, we always podcast everything, so it'll be available on irlonestar.com, YouTube, and SoundCloud as fast as possible. Most importantly, the reason we're doing this, folks, is to get you informed and so you can go vote. Visit mctx.org, that's mctx.org/election for polling locations and times, because you can early vote, starting now, starting yesterday, leading all the way up next week, and then March 1st, of course, for the voting day. Today's special guest is your Councilman, Duke Coon. Duke, how are you doing? Welcome back.
Good morning.
We do want to say that, well, we had two guests.
I always like it when they go, when you look at Nathan, he's like, "Ohhh." So what are you going to tell me here, man? I'm ready for it.
I'm going to take him out back.
I had to interrupt him just to get him. I had to get him.
Guys, we'll be back in a minute. We've got to have a conversation with Dick backstage.
Yeah, Nathan, have you had that morning cup of coffee yet?
I've had one and a half cups and that's it for the day.
One and a half cups, alright.
No more.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no, no. We had two guests. We had Jim Gentry, businessman, former City Council member and mayoral candidate, who were, was going to be here, but he had a business meeting come up at the last minute that we knew about, so we just weren't sure. So Duke was planning on being here anyway, so we got Duke that's going to come in and fill in the spot. So Jim, too bad, buddy. We might let you back on the air.
Too bad.
No, Jim.
As news as you lose on Lone Star Community Radio.
No, we're rescheduling with him. We're rescheduling.
Okay, so we got Duke here, and I'm going to take advantage. We had him back in the studio, and I think, did I release that podcast yet? I don't even know. There's so much stuff going on here.
Nope, I haven't seen it yet.
Alright, then I'll work on that. I'm sorry, Duke. But welcome back. And I know you have a lot of stuff you want to talk about, especially about voting, and especially about the city of Conroe, because you are a City Councilperson of the city of Conroe. And I think it's, isn't it coming up, y'all are going to have workshop pretty soon?
Oh, we will have a workshop coming up next Wednesday, 2:00 at City Hall. And then our regularly scheduled council meeting will be 9:30 a.m. on Thursday, so.
And have you ever thought about doing Google Hangouts for these? Because I know y'all do, y'all broadcast them on our city TV and also online at a cityofconroe.org.
You know, that's a great suggestion. Victoria Insley with the city of Conroe may be somebody we need to address that issue with. I think that's an outstanding idea.
Because you love anonymous people writing in, making fun of you guys. I think one of my favorite pastimes that has been developing the past 10 years of my life is reading internet comments. I don't know, I don't know if y'all like doing those things, but I get lost reading the Courier and the comments online. And like, all these people have these random names, you don't know who they are, but what's great is they know who each other are. They guess, like, oh, this must be Miss So-and-so of so-and-so. And it's very entertaining for me, but...
You know, I've learned after many years of being representative of the city of Conroe, just to never get caught up in all those comments that you read. You know, we, we realize as an elected official that we're going to, we're going to make some folks happy and some just won't be with some of the decisions made. So it's a mixed bag. You just keep looking forward and doing the right things, and you don't have to look over your shoulder. Let the comments just fall where they may.
Strength in leadership, I like it. So, but I was just, I just like reading them. I never contribute, because you never know how, what kind of day people are having, and they might get really upset. But I really enjoy that. But welcome back, and I'm really excited. What's going on with you and the city of Conroe these days? I know voting's coming up, so y'all getting all the polling locations ready? May, because y'all are handing the May elections, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. It is, it is very busy at the city of Conroe. I just wanted to mention, I'm, I'm not running for reelection until May of 2018, so.
So you're really putting it in.
But, but you can keep those letters of support and money coming in.
No, 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 no.
We're joking, we're joking.
No, 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 absolutely not. But I know this is your candidate hour, and just wanted to make that clear to the listeners that I won't be on the ballot in 2016.
Well, they can write you in, right?
No, 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 let's don't do that.
For mayor? Or what kind of write you in? I want him as my judge.
Well, listen, well, thank you for that. But that's a good segue into some of the information I brought today. What's important for me is that we get this information out about voting locations and candidates to our citizens. I'd really like to start about our voting, start with our voting locations. We have three voting locations for the first time ever in the city of Conroe. Early voting will be at City Hall on the sixth floor, 300 West Davis. That is April 25th through 29th, through the 29th. And May 2nd through the 3rd, those hours are from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And May 2nd through the 3rd, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We have two other locations, Living Branch Church for our friends out west. That's 13229 Highway 105 West here in Conroe. Same hours, early voting, April 25th through the 29th, from 8:00 to 5:00.
Now, Living Branch, that's near April Sound, isn't it? That's like in between by the River Bridge or something?
It is, it is. The city of Conroe made a decision to take the distance really from the North Loop out to the entrance of April Sound and divide that distance. And in the middle, about three miles from the gates of April Sound is Living Branch Church. So we're very happy to have a voting location out there for our friends out west. We also have a third location down south, Grace Crossing Church. It's 105 FM 1488. Once again, those same times apply and same dates. Early voting is April 25th through the 29th, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And of course, May 2nd through the 3rd, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
I think I can make it. I don't know. But also, don't forget your ID.
Well, I think, I think.
Let's make sure they know that.
Early voting is a big thing. I mean, it's, it's got quite a few days and hours there. If you live in town, you can swing by. If you live on the outskirts of town, I mean, in the city limits, of course, of course, you wouldn't be voting. But you work downtown, or you're going from one side to the other, that makes it so dug 'em convenient and, and easy to work your schedule at work, or kids, or whatever around.
You know, Nathan, you bring up a good point about access and how easy it is to vote now. But there's one other thing we need to talk about, and that's, that's if you can't leave your home and you prefer to have a mail-in ballot, and you can certainly call our city secretary, Ms. Soko Gorhan. And her number is 522-3010, and of course, that's area code 936. And you can apply for a mail-in ballot. So.
Do you know we have to qualify hats? Like, what do you?
Well, I think it's got the same qualifying aspects to it.
Okay.
So you'll have to send in a copy of, I believe, your ID and maybe a copy of your voter's registration card. But call Ms. Soko Gorhan at the city, and she'll fill you in on those details.
So anyone can do mail-in?
Absolutely.
Why? What's the big deal? About voting now? I thought it was restricted only to like disabled people here in the state of Texas, so I didn't know you can do mail-in. But there you go, folks.
For years and years, you've been able to do it. You've been able to do mail-in. I did it for many years. Did mail-in. It was just so easy to get it out of the way.
Let's hope it counts. It gets there, right?
It absolutely counts.
How's the United States Postal Service doing these days? Do we need, do we need to certify mail, this thing? Is that what we need to do?
And listen, and while, while we're on the topic of voting locations, Nathan and I talked the other day about getting some information out on the candidates that are running this year. I'll start with the mayoral race.
Well, actually, do you mind if we take a break?
No, sure.
Because I know that's going to be a pretty, pretty long-winded description right there for the Americans and stuff like that. So right now, you're listening to Mornings with Lone Star with Lone Star Community Radio, your community radio station. We're sitting with Duke Coon, who's your City Councilperson, and Nathan Arizati of Montgomery County Lifestyle. We'll be back with the candidates coming up. Is this for the May election we're going to be talking about?
That's correct.
And so if you want to be informed and in sync with everything, stick around here on Mornings with Lone Star with Meet the Candidates. I like a good drinking song at 9:20 in the morning. I was talking about that earlier. I was like, I hate playing beer and alcohol songs so early, because, but unfortunately, Texas country, about 90% is about drinking.
Well, there's not as many songs about the dog getting taken away in the divorce, though.
Yeah, we miss those 90s country music. That's kind of...
Yeah, well.
Welcome back to Mornings with Lone Star. What a great segue into it. Hope you enjoyed that extended break. I hope you enjoyed that music. We're taking song requests, folks, 24/7. IRLoneStar on Twitter and Facebook, Lone Star Community Radio. Welcome back to Meet the Candidates. I'm sitting with our city councilman, Duke Coon of city of Conroe, and also with Nathan Arizati of Montgomery County Lifestyle. Get out and vote, folks. Mctx.org/election for your polling locations and times. You pretty much have till March 1st to vote, so get out there. There's no excuse. And what I just found out from Mr. Coon here is you can register to vote. Is that just for city elections, though?
Nope.
Or mail-in? The mail-in, is that, is that across the board?
Yep.
Okay, so you have no excuse. And if you're, I mean, come on, that's, I really thought that you couldn't do mail-in votes unless you were qualified for certain, certain deals. But bring it on, okay. I think I'm going to do that, because that's how, that's how much faith I have in the United States Postal Service. That's really what it comes down to. But welcome back. And I know we are, we kind of led on what's going to happen coming in May. Elections are coming in May. That has to do with city of Conroe. So Duke wants to talk about who's, who's running.
That's correct. The candidates. I've got a list of the candidates here in front of me. You can go to cityofconroe.org if you need voting information, or this list of candidates that I have with me today. The mayoral race, there's three candidates as of today. I think the filing deadline is February 19th to file. Mr. Toby Powell's running for mayor, Mr. Jim Gentry, and Ms. Doris Hickman are running for that position. And as you all know, Mayor Melder has termed out. He's done a good job as our mayor, and he's, he's served his time. He served one term on city council and then took over after mayor Tommy Medcalf, and has served eight years as mayor. In place one, we have Mr. Tony Fuller.
When you say place one, do you mean council?
Council, council place one.
Sorry, I don't know the lingo.
Council place one, we have Mr. Tony Fuller running for city council, Mr. Carl White, Mr. Dwayne Ham, and Ms. Sandra Whisenhunt-Walker are all running for that position. That position is now seated by Ms. Marsha Porter. She's termed out as well. She served her eight-year term, and done an excellent job representing the citizens of Conroe. And as most of you know, Marsha was our basketball, head basketball coach at Conroe High School for almost 40 years, won many state awards. So congratulations to her on her term.
That sounds like an achievement right there.
It is, it is.
No, I'm sorry, just to backtrack, let me understand this. You say eight-year term. Does that mean when you're running for city council, you have eight years after you get elected? Or is it you have a max, you can serve as eight years?
Max is eight years. Each term is a four-year term.
Okay, okay. I understand. How about mayor? What's the marathon situation?
Same thing, same thing. The only other spot is place two. It's currently seated by Councilman Seth Gibson. Seth does a great job up there. He's been in the community many, many years, and he's running for reelection. So he's just finishing his first four-year term. Those running against Mr. Gibson are Demetrius, Damon White, and Mr. Mark Frank. So those are the candidates as of today.
Now, let me ask you this. In the forum two weeks ago, was Mr. Frank there? He hadn't signed up yet, had he?
No, I don't believe he did.
Okay, I didn't think so.
No, he's, he's new to the race. And like I said, I think the last day to sign up for the ballot for the city of Conroe is February the 19th.
So this could all change.
It could.
This whole list.
It could. It's a moving target.
There you go. Okay, one thing I gotta, I gotta understand, if you don't mind, is the, this whole election process for the city of Conroe, is it going to be the same polling locations? Is this the same, it's just happening in May?
Absolutely. And any questions you have, go to cityofconroe.org, or call our city secretary at 522-3010, 522-3010, and she'll be able to walk you through the process. So cityofconroe.org, or call City Hall.
Let's go back to that question. Was your question, is it the same polling locations as going on right now?
Yes.
What's going to happen in March? No.
No.
That's county.
That's correct.
That's all county.
Okay. I'm just wondering. I'm trying, I'm trying to understand this process.
Go for it, Duke.
You're asking about the polling locations?
Yes, sir.
They are, they are different.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
And well, I mean, that makes sense, because it's a city and not county. But with the city election, too, one thing was, let me try to fully understand these positions. These are, are these paid positions? Is this like more of a, you have another job, kind of like our state reps, they have other jobs, and like, they just kind of, is there service time, things like that? Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Sure, that's a good question. The mayor and the council members are compensated.
Okay.
And there's reimbursements for phone, all those types of things. But, you know, our city's growing, and we expect to be at 100,000 in the next five or six years in population. And, you know, we're not that small sleepy town any longer. We're really running a major corporation up there. And so it takes a lot of time and dedication. I mean, I'm honored to do it. I know it takes a lot of our time each and every week, and it's just a pleasure, pleasure to serve. But it's, it's serious business. And for those candidates running, they have to be ready day one. They're going to have to put in the time and the dedication and the research to be sure that they're ready day one to step in and serve. The days of coming on to council, or some other elected position, and, and learning that position over time are really passing us. You have to do the homework up front and be ready to step in. We're just moving so fast.
Yeah, I think what's interesting about the mayor and also the councilman positions, or councilwoman positions, too, is the qualifications. It's really not as clear-cut as, say, a judge, or the DA, and current people who are voting for now. So I think that's probably even more important for people to know, is get educated, get to know these citizens, because they want to make a difference in your community, folks, either for good or for bad. You got to know who these people are, and especially when they're running for your local position. Like, we've, I've spoken to Duke in the past, is how much power you as a citizen has, or a voice, in a sense, at these council meetings, because really, you can, yourself can make a change, even if you're not a councilman, or councilwoman, or a mayor. You can actually make your voice heard, and you can be a problem to these people, but a good problem, depending on what you're trying to argue. And I think that's, it's one of the most interesting forms of government, too, because it's, like you said, we're growing, and we're getting to that point where we can make, we can, we can knock on some doors, we can shake things up and make a better quality of life for people here. And I think a lot of people who are looking to move see Conroe as a good place to move to because of what goes on at the city council meetings currently and things like that.
No, I totally agree. And listen, your mayor and council can't do this job without the support of the citizens. Citizens' input is critical to the success of this city. I make decisions up there based on input I gather from citizens. And when we speak and talk, they call me on the phone. It just forces me to do more research and more homework, and I make a better decision. So if you've got a complaint or question, please come to the workshops. That's the second and fourth Wednesday of the month at 2:00. Or come to our council meetings, the second and fourth Thursday of the month. And let us know what you're thinking. Come tell us. Call your council members. And while we're talking about that, a number to reach the mayor and council is that same number you can reach the city secretary at. That's 936-522-3010. If you can't get through to those guys, you call me on my cell phone, and that's 936-520-0769. Look, we work for you guys. That's what this is about. And you've got a mayor and a council up there that's ready to work.
I think it's really exciting. Right now, it's around 9:30. When we come back, we're going to continue our talk with Duke Coon, and then also Nathan Arizati. Talking about politics, folks. Get out and early vote for this primary election. That's the key word. This is a primary election. And then the next election is in May, and for the city of Conroe, for two positions on the city council, and also mayor. When we come back, we're going to talk more with Duke. Like I said, if you've got a question for Duke, all you got to do is go to Montgomery County Lifestyle on their Facebook, write it to Nathan. Nathan is literally on his computer, always doing something. And I kind of want to know his history on the internet, but I'm...
Well, what it is, it's top secret.
That's what I believe.
I've only had one and a half cups of coffee, darling. Not that I need any more coffee, darling. And if anybody's got any free tickets to Barry Menelone, darling, just let me know.
We'll be back here on Mornings with Lone Star, your morning radio show for Montgomery County. That was John Slaughter right there, folks. He's a local Montgomery boy. That's Pray for Rain from his 2011 album. You're listening to Mornings with Lone Star here on Lone Star Community Radio, 940. We're going to be wrapping this segment out right before the Cindy Conkrin Show. Just so you know, Cindy's going to have another election thing going on. She's going to have someone running for Judge 9th District Court, Phil Grant. He's going to be in the studio. And that's going to be happening at 10:00. After them, Hanging with the Haters is going to be replayed. If you didn't know, Mark Hader, the man who writes your Sunday Trends column with rooftop, right on the rooftop. Mark, he had surgery on his arm. He'll be out, and we're thinking about him. Hopefully, he has a quick recovery, and he's hoped to be back with his lovely wife, Kay, next Wednesday for Hanging with the Haters. So that's coming on this morning here on Lone Star, Lone Star Community Radio. Got to get that name changed, Ryan. But we are your community radio station, taking song requests, taking questions right now for Duke Coon, your city councilman at Montgomery County Lifestyle with my buddy Nathan right here. Let's get back into it. We're talking about Conroe. We're kind of changing it up a little bit. Coming up in May, there's an election for two councilmen/women spots, and then also the mayor's spot. And it's going to be interesting to see who is our next mayor, because, you know, the mayor is always like the one I always grew up in watching, you know, reading comics, and watching the cartoons and things like that. The mayor is always the guy who comes in and has like the final say on everything, because he's, I don't know why. It's always like the Power Rangers, like, thanks, mayor, you know, that kind of stuff. So this, apparently, it's an important role. One thing I want to know with Duke sitting here, because he goes to these workshops and things all the time, because it's part of his service to this county, or to the city, is with the mayor's position, what is the mayor's role in, I guess, not just facilitating, but just part of the workshop, part of the votes, part of the whole movement, or I guess the, the living essence of the city? What's going on with the mayor? What's the mayor do?
No, that's a great question. Listen, the mayor sets the agenda. The mayor does not vote. We operate under a Home Rule Charter here, which is one of the, really, I believe, one of the strongest forms of charters that a city can operate under. It really, it really gives access to the citizens. But back to the role of the mayor, does not vote, only, I should say, he votes only in case of a tie between the council. But you've got five council members, so it's almost impossible to have a tie up there.
It is impossible, Ryan.
Well, unless someone's absent. If someone's not present, and one of the council members aren't, aren't at the meeting, then certainly...
Or a conflict of interest.
Correct. And you may have a two-to-two tie. That's correct. And in that case, the mayor would, would vote. But also in case of emergency, the mayor takes control of the fire and police and the operations, and, and runs the city. So it's a very important position. He's also our figurehead.
Person to blame, alright.
Well, some will tell you that falls with, with the city council who actually votes. But no, it's a very important position. And, and for Mr. Powell, for Mr. Gentry, and Ms. Hickman, look, our future is bright, but leadership is important. And, and those folks have to be ready day one to step in and not only be a figurehead for our city, but be a good steward of our taxpayer money, and really a good leader for our employees at City Hall. So it's a very important position. We'll see what happens in May.
Well, one thing I do want to say is, with the availability of our city TV and the cityofconroe.org live feed of the city council, it's really easy, with a few clicks of a button, you can see what you guys are doing.
Absolutely. It truly is about being transparent and, and really getting the information out to our citizens. That's the goal. You've got to get them involved so that they'll come up and tell us what they're thinking. We need their opinions. And like I said earlier, we can't do this without our citizens' input. We have to have it. They run this, the city, our citizens. And, you know, I get up in the morning and feel like I, I report to 75,000 citizens. And that's just, that's just what I signed up to do and what I like.
Well, and one of the things we talked about a minute ago, I think, and I've been hearing on the streets, so to speak, and we've talked about it, city government, county government, needs to work a little closer together, possibly, individual basis, government to government. So I think it's important to, we've got a lot of people who may not be able to vote in the election, but they work in Conroe. So what happens in Conroe, and the decisions, city council, and the ordinances and things that you make, are still important to somebody who spends eight, nine, 10 hours of their day here, and their business is here. They just might live outside the city limits. So, I mean, I think you hit the nail on the head. We got to get involved. People need to read the paper, go to the city website, call their councilman, find out what's going on. You know what? Set up a meeting. Come to City Hall, set up a meeting.
Absolutely.
Come to the different, to the different city council meetings, and like you said, watch it on TV. That being said, what do you feel, getting, as we grow, what kind of trends do you see your government, city council, or mayor, working hand-in-hand with commissioners and the constables and things like that?
Well, listen, listen, Judge Doyle and our commissioners do an excellent job over there. And, and I can tell you that we have a great relationship with our commissioners and our county judge. We have to work closely, hand-in-hand, whether it's an infrastructure component, or whether it's safety-related issues, we have to continue to work with the county to be sure to move Montgomery County forward in the city of Conroe. So we've got a great partnership with Montgomery County. They're our neighbors, they're our downtown neighbors here, and we're prepared to continue to work with them.
So on the elected side, on the campaigning side, you've got a lot of great people running. You've got a lot of people who the citizens maybe don't really know about. There's no, you know, they, they've just haven't been a big figurehead, a big name in town in business. But they're throwing their hat in the ring, and they want to step up, and they want to try to represent. I mean, I think that's awesome. But it also costs a lot of money. What, what do you think the average campaign can run for city council/mayor? And I'll end this with, I respect really hard those that pay their own way and don't take donations. And you're one of those.
Well, you know, Nathan, thank you. I decided a long time ago to self-fund my campaigns. I think, I think that's important. And let me, let me say this. It's easy for you to do that when you're running in a city election. If you're a county candidate running, my goodness, you've got to cover the entire county with signs and literature, mailouts, et cetera. That can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars in a county race. So I understand why they take the monies that they do and the contributions. Back to your question about cost, I can only tell you about, about my cost. It generally costs somewhere between $8,000 and $20,000 to run. Some won't put that much money into it, some will. And we've got some great candidates running. You know, I see some names on this list that I have not seen before, running for office. And I admire them. I admire someone willing to step up and step into the heat and serve. You know, I think the second greatest calling for me in my life, other than the United States Navy and serving my country, was serving my community. This community built, built me into the man I am today, and I owe this community everything. So I admire these folks. They're patriots, every one of them. I certainly have my ideas about who is ready day one to, to run this city, but I have nothing but the highest regard for these candidates. I admire them for stepping into this race.
So with that said, are you going to tell us who you think?
Well, you know, you know, Nathan, listen, listen, Nathan, I don't, I don't back away from a question. And, you know, I've been accused of not being very politically correct, and I really like that when people say that, or accuse me of not being politically correct.
Political correctness is killing us. We need to not hurt feelings, but we need to say what we feel.
You know, you're correct. I could not feel stronger about that issue. Look, I can only talk about a few candidates here. I'm going to talk about Toby Powell for a moment, and, because I know Toby and Jim Gentry. I don't know Ms. Hickman. I met her, gosh, in early February, at a candidate forum out in April Sound. Toby Powell is, he's a good friend of mine. He serves on the Lone Star Board, Hospital Board with me. He does a great job. He's our vice president out there, and I'm proud to call him a friend. As you know, Jim Gentry, my goodness, Jim is a very personal friend of mine, a good man, a good leader. And let me say this about these two gentlemen. They both served our community on council. I think Toby served once in the 70s, and he served again, I think it was, oh, gosh, 2010, maybe Toby came on, on council again. You know, Toby loves to serve. He's a good man. He's prepared to serve. Jim spent eight years on city council. And these men are ready day one to serve. And meeting Ms. Hickman, she is a very nice lady. And I think for more information on Ms. Hickman, I thought she had a website here, but I don't see anything. Back, let me back up. For Toby Powell, you can reach him at tobypal@hotmail.com. And for Mr. Gentry, that's jimgentryformayor@gmail.com. We've got some great candidates running for mayor.
Well, Duke, thank you so much for coming in and letting everyone know what's coming up in May. And we'll probably be focusing more on the May election coming up, after we get rid of this one in March. When I say get rid of, I mean, get off your button, go vote. Mctx.org/election. Nathan, again, thank you so much for coming in and being part of my co-host for this special segment. We'll be back tomorrow with it at 9:00. Do we have a guest tomorrow?
What's tomorrow? Thursday?
Yeah.
Tomorrow is Patty McGinnis.
There you go, Patty McGinnis. She's running for judge, I know that. But I don't know what court.
Judge 435, that's the one that has now got dropped down to two candidates versus three. And there is a lot of interesting conversation
Good.
about that, because that, there's some strange dynamics. Even though the candidate, Mike Siller, dropped out, his name's still on the ballot. So we'll talk tomorrow about that.
Well, that means we need to do a good job of informing people that he's not in